This is our Special Water Pollution Control Authority, a regular town council meeting of North Branford, Connecticut, Tuesday, September 21st, 2021, in the Town Council Chambers at 7:05 PM. We'll start with a salute to the flag.
[inaudible]
Sure. So we have Councilmember Fawnen.
Fawnen.
Fawnen, my apologies. Councilmember Ghul. Councilmember Angeloni.
Here.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Vigliano.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Zampano.
Here.
Councilmember Diamond.
Yes, here.
Sir, what is your name?
Isabel. Isabel Schellberg, we're town attorneys.
Okay. Thank you so much.
And, yes, and Tara will be coming momentarily, I think.
Okay. Awesome.
I don't believe that Counselor Duty or Counselor Pollicia will be here tonight.
Okay. Minister of the previous meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Counselor Angeloni, second by Counselor Diamond. Any discussion? Can I have a vote, please?
If you ask it, I'm all in favor.
All right.
Aye.
All, any votes?
No.
Okay. Before we get started, there's something I want to say. I want to give a shout out to the police, and I'm glad you guys are here, and also Anthony from the fire department, I'm glad you're here. I had a friend of mine that lost his son about two weeks ago, and I just talked to him two or three days ago, I can't remember when it was, and he just wanted to tell me what a great guy, what a great job you guys did, fire and police, tried to bring him back, he wanted a passing away, CPR didn't work, and I just wanted to say that you did a fantastic job, and I want to let you guys know that. I know sometimes it goes, nothing gets said about it, but this is important. Also, the state trooper that was killed, that drowned, I guess it was after the hurricane, I think is when it was, well, we were represented there, the town of North Branford was represented by police and fire, and I thought that was pretty good, I'm pretty proud to live here and have you guys do stuff like that, make me happy that I live here. Okay, that's it for that. So thank you, guys, I appreciate it, we appreciate it. All right, let's go into the, we can do the public hearing, sewer usage charge.
Good evening, for the, I guess, for you, for the record, Victor Bennie, the town engineer, here tonight to represent to you the operating budget and user fee and the capital budget for the sewer, the Sewer Works Operating Fund. We start out with the Office of the Tax Collector of the Town of North Branford did put in a legal notice to the Tucutat Times for the notice of the public hearing for the purpose of establishing sewer use fee for the 2021 and 2022 fiscal year. The sewer use charge that is being proposed to you tonight is at $475 per unit, and I can...
Yeah, I think if we could pause right there, I think, Mayor, just for the record, to formally open the public hearing and time at 7:08 or 7:07.
Okay, they were 7:08?
Yeah, I'm not, I think in the past, I think you might have read the legal notice.
Yeah.
I think that would be helpful for the record, and then we'll go back to, well, I think you should...
Sorry, did I jump into?
No, that's all right. My, I sort of prepped you on that.
Yeah, that's all, yeah.
Yeah, have you read the notice, and then we'll open the hearing, and then if there are no comments, then of course we can have the engineer jump right in and finish his presentation.
Okay. It's public notice, it's from the Office of the Tax Collector, Town of North Branford, legal notice, notice of public hearing, sewer usage charge, the North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority pursuant to section 7-255 of the Connecticut General Statutes will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 21st, 2021, at 7:00 PM at the Town Hall Council Chambers, 909 Foxen Road, North Branford, for the purpose of establishing a proposed sewer usage fee for the 2021-2022 fiscal year. The proposed charge is $475 per unit, and a copy of the proposed charges is on file with the Town Clerk's Office and is available for inspection by the public, dated in North Branford, Connecticut, this 10th day of September 2021, Water Pollution Control Authority, Town of North Branford. Okay.
Yeah, I think maybe, I don't know if there's anyone here from the public, I can't, I can't, it doesn't look like it, but I think you should just ask if there's anybody...
Yeah, does anybody out there that needs to talk about this? No, I guess it's yours, Vic.
All right. If time permits, I could review the budget that we have before you, the operating budget and sewer use fees under the annual budget for the sewer, for the special revenue fund, which is Fund 201. We have a beginning undesignated balance fund of being proposed at $532,083. We have estimated total revenue at one point, about $1.4 million, then leading to the amount available in the, being proposed in the budget is just over $1.9 million. We have a total expenditures line approaching $1.3 million, and that line includes the proposed total expenditure, which is primary, or down this year primarily based on a reduction in some of the intermunicipal costs that we have to Branford, and that would be one of the items to Branford that we no longer have to pay, is the five-year phase-in for the capital improvements for some expansions that they made to their system five years ago. And Branford also refinanced some of their clean water fund debt, which is another reason why that total expenditures line item is down a little bit from last year. The ending unassigned fund balance that we end up with is about $641,706, and that leaves us with a comfortable fund balance to cover any potential unforeseen problems to the system. We don't like to use the word catastrophic, but those are more of the catastrophic problems, and we, it's kind of in line at $641,000, it's in line with the value that we've carried over past years, being, you know, between a $500 and $625,000 range over the past years. That leads us to our equivalent units increasing from 2,750 units to 2,800 units, which gives us a user fee that we're able to keep the same as last year at $475, and that leads us to our billings going out at, assuming that we have a 97% collection rate being at about $1.3 million in billings that we'll be sending out based on that unit price of $475. The following page of the budget is a review of the expenditures, we'll get too detailed on all that, but we have personnel services, materials and supplies, contractual services, and the, you know, the big items there, the main items there would be the intermunicipal costs of $850,000-plus dollars to the flows that we send to the three other municipalities from our three separate portions of our system, and the other contractual obligation to mainly to Veolia at $240,000. The, there's also a capital outlay, employee benefits, and a operating transfer, capital sinking fund, all that for expenditures comes out to about one point, or $1,294,613. The following page we have, Budget Form Number Two, being a breakdown of personnel costs, summing up to $116,349. Couple more breakdown pages, Budget Form Number Three is the Sewer Works Operating, or, sorry, Materials and Supplies, being office supplies, technical supplies, motor fuels and lubricants totaling $2,141. Budget Form Number Four is the Contractual Services Breakdown, being the telephone services to the pump stations, the utilities from RWA, Wallingford Electric, United Illuminating to the pump stations and the meter stations that we have throughout town, including also we have some advertising and postage prices down there totaling $44,595 for the, again, for the contractual services. I can't leave out the last page, Budget Form Number Five, Capital Outlay of a total of $100, it looks like we needed a monitor, replace a monitor, and that pretty much brings me to the end of the review for the actual budget for the Operating Fund and the Sewer Use Fee. Could either go into the capital budget, or I'm not sure how we worked that out for a motion, or...
Yeah, if you want, now I think you can finish up in terms of summary for capital, and I think the procedure would be to come out if there weren't any more question, motion to come out of your public hearing, and then go into the order of business for the authority and approve those budgets, and there's prepared motions, so I think that would be the order of business.
And any...
I have a question, Vic.
Yeah.
Is this the same as it was last year? The rate is the same?
Fees the same, $475.
The user fee, right, would be the same as last year, $475. Right.
Okay.
Okay, so moving on to the capital budget, if there's no other questions, the Capital Projects Fund is Fund 412, 413, and 414, it has a beginning balance of $275,062. The revenues that we have in that account being $15,000 for assessments and $30,837 as a operating transfer in from the Special Works Operate, or, sorry, Sewer Works Operating Fund, gives us a total revenue, who's at $45,837, which then gives us a total available balance of $320,899. Backing out our expenditures from that total available balance, we have an expenditure of our emergency capital expenditure at $80,000, that covers the improvements that we're working on right now at the Reed's Gap Pump Station, and also the additional approximately $45,000 in miscellaneous communications and system upgrades that we have planned for most of the other four pump stations throughout the system, again, that's an $80,000 expenditure. The operating transfer out, which from the revenues above, we now back out the operating transfer out for the Sewer Works Operating Fund at $30,837,000, giving us our total expenditures at $110,837, with our final ending balance being proposed at $210,062. We would expect that number to, I may have to, before I say that, check with Anthony, so that final balance basically increases with future assessments, correct?
That's correct.
So anticipating some of the, you know, future assessments that we have on projects that are being considered and proposed throughout the next year, we may be able to add to that total balance and increase the capital budget, which would help us to fund some of the other projects that I've been reviewing with Veolia, our contractor, to improve some of the pump stations where we have some improvements that even Kurt was interested in doing, but until we have some more money in the capital account, there are projects that we're not going to take on yet until we have the additional funds.
So the assessments are, like, for residential, is it $12,300?
Correct.
Fee to hook up to sewers?
Yes.
And then whatever the breakdown is for commercial?
Right, right.
It's rated a little bit differently?
Right.
But those are, that's the assessments that you're talking to?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Sorry to throw, I don't know if that's the way we've done it before, or not thrown a bunch of numbers at you, but it's kind of a rough review of both of the budgets, if you have any additional questions.
Thank you, Vic.
Thank you.
Okay.
You need to close the public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Fawnen, seconded by Counselor Angeloni.
Seven nineteen.
Seven, yeah, seven eighteen. Any discussion on this? No? All right, can we have a vote, please, Christine?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll move into the Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda. First, we have Correspondence Citizen Statements. I don't believe there's any. Next, Unfinished Business, there's none. And next, we have New Business, and the first one is, A is for year 2021-2022 Sewer Works Operational Fund Budget, Capital Budget, and User Fee. First is Adoption of Operating Budget and User Fee.
I'd like to make a motion, be it resolved, that the North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority, acting in its capacity as the sewer authority for the Town of North Branford, hereby adopts the attached sewer budget and establishes a sewer fee of $475 per unit for the 2021-22 fiscal year.
I'll second that. Okay, motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Ghul, I believe it was. Any further discussion? Can I have a vote, please?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the Adoption of Capital Budget.
I'd like to make a motion, be it resolved, that the North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority, acting in its capacity as the sewer authority for the Town of North Branford, hereby adopts the attached sewer capital budget for the 2021-22 fiscal year.
Second. Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Fawnen, was that you, Joe?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Can I have a vote, please?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next, we have White Hollow Sewer Deferral Payment.
There are two properties there, there's a prepared memo in your packet for 47 Blue Trail and 52 Blue Trail.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a sewer deferral payment for the following addresses, 47 Blue Trail Drive and 52 Blue Trail Drive, Northford.
Second that. Okay. Motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Ghul. Any further discussion? Can I have a vote, please?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, next, we'll move into Citizen Statements and Petitions. Mike, do you have anything?
None, no comment.
All right, we'll move into Reports of Committees, Boards, and Commissions. First, we have Economic Development Commission.
They met last week, there's a detailed report in our packet, starting on page 27, and one, so the Belafonte Project, which is the pines of Northford, the apartment development, so they have been having some pre-application meetings with the P&amp;Z, and so that is moving along, and they are preparing to submit a full application at a future P&amp;Z meeting. The other big news is the old IGA store in the Central Plaza has officially been rented out, and I just want to wish the Patel's a lot of good luck in renovating, and they will be opening up a warehouse liquor store there, and so they have already started remodeling. There's a lot of work, that place has been vacant for a long time, so Town Line Wine and Spirits, they negotiate the lease, and they are starting to do it and plan on an early 2022 opening on there, so, and that's all that I have.
Okay, thank you, Rose. Next, we have Parks and Rec.
They meet next week on September 28th.
Okay, Police Commission.
Police Commission met on September 13th, I think the highlight of the meeting was the swearing-in ceremony of the new policeman, who is Nicole Bernstein, now we're going to have two females in our police department, there was discussion about the new marijuana laws and the training that the policeman have to go through, quite a bit discussion about the dirt bike activity in town, we still seem to have a lot of town, and thanks to our state rep, we now are able, through a new bill that was approved by the House, and it starts on October 1st, where communities that have less than 20,000 residents can now have an ordinance about dirt bike activity, and that the police can have a little more teeth in what they do when they are able to get someone who's out there with a dirt bike. You have a copy of a proposed ordinance in your packet, and it was basically for you to take a look at, I'm not sure if Ben Marino's looked at it yet, but kind of if you want to take a, you know, chance to look at it and digest it, I know that members of the Police Commission are very concerned about the dirt bike activity that's going on in this town, it's not any different, though, than any other town in the state, and it's something that needs to be addressed. I would also like to say, I was impressed with a number of letters in the packet at the Police Commission meeting, of people in town or whatever commending our police department, I think we should be very proud of the number of police officers and the things they've done, and they've been able, in one case, they were able to save someone who probably wouldn't have made it if it hadn't been for quick action on the part of a police officer. I really think a lot of them go above and beyond. And the last thing that's interesting is, just so everybody knows, from the DOT, they are going to be changing, you know how sometimes in certain lights, they change them to flashing at night, they're, any state-owned light, for example, there's one near me on 22 and Village Street that starts flashing about 10 o'clock, they're going to stop all that, it's going to keep the light as it was, as a regular traffic light, because I guess they've discovered through a lot of research that there have been more accidents as a cause of that, so that's something that's going to change now in the future, so that's basically what happened during that meeting.
Okay. I have a question, Marie, and maybe the chief, too. I had asked Assistant Chief Lovelace to look into a new light at Seahill and Route 80.
Oh, that's, I guess the state hasn't responded to that yet, if I remember correctly, they're still waiting for a response from the state.
Okay, okay.
I know, that's, I think that's been, I think that's been an issue for a long time, and I think the request has been there, but the state has been kind of slow in our response.
Okay. Thank you, Marie, that's it? You all set? Okay, next, they have Fire Commission, and Ron's not here, so we'll pass on that. Next, they have Board of Education, Town Council Communications Subcommittee.
There's no meeting.
Okay, next is Planning and Zoning Commission.
I didn't intend it.
Okay, next is Finance Subcommittee.
Finance met last week, and a few things that we discussed on there was, Anthony gave us the preliminary financial results for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021, and the undesignated, is it the undesignated fund balance?
Unassigned, yes.
Unassigned fund balance did increase a little bit, the preliminary numbers, so June 30th of '20, so a year ago, it was at 17.69%, and the preliminary number for 63021 is 17.97%. So North Branford remains in good condition, in very good condition, in regards to that, so we talked about that. We also talked about the ARPA projects, and ARPA is the federal money that the town is getting, which is roughly $4.1 million. We already have approx, a little over $2 million, and the other, the remaining is scheduled for next year to come in. So the, the analysis as to how the money could be used, at some point in time soon, we are going to have to make a decision as to how we just designate it, because right now it's designated as for sewer, water, broadband?
And infrastructure, yes.
Infrastructure, but there is a component to this as far as the general fund lost revenue analysis, and originally, the way Anthony and Mike had explained it to the Finance Committee was, they didn't think we qualified for that because we didn't have a lot of lost revenue, but the way that the regulations are written, and to calculate your lost revenue, it's, you use a 4.1% growth factor in your lost revenue, and so when you factor that in into our revenue numbers, and then it's, you use it for both years, so you used it in fiscal year 2020, and then in 2021, using that calculation, we are above the total amount of money that we will be receiving from the feds, so if we designate that the money goes towards lost revenue on there, we have a much broader sense of how that money can be used, it's the broadest sense of the projects that we can use that on. So the council is going to have to make a determination of, do we go with the lost revenue, and, or we stick with what they say, infrastructure, water, sewer, and broadband? So that will be on a upcoming agenda, it's not on tonight's agenda, but that will be coming before the council.
Is it, when does that decision have to be made?
Probably relatively soon.
I think you want to go through the, a process of identifying or outlining what your process is going to be, and then understanding which projects would be eligible, what those price tags are, and then just kind of, you know, map it all out, and I'm hoping to give a, you know, additional information as we gather it on projects for the October meetings, and then going forward, you know, deciding which direction you want to go. There's a lot to unpack in terms of, and again, Rose did a great job in explaining, and part of the other is how it fits with the state, the analysis of terms of if we're able to go after other pots in terms of economic development, that we might take some projects off if we're getting a grant from, coming from the state that we're eligible for, great, and/or future federal infrastructure, roads, bridges, and whatever else is coming down the pipe, then we take a look at matching those all up, so we can try and leverage and decide which projects base on that.
So, Rose, is there a specific list of what we can use that money for if we claim it that way?
Well, that's the process that we have to go through, and, so we can, we can look at a variety of projects. One of the things that the Finance Company Committee discussed is, and Rusty is here tonight, is we don't have numbers on NBIS yet as to what the final, I mean, it has to go out to bid, but, you know, as we learned earlier this year, it's not just the brickwork that has to be done, we're also looking at a roof issue, and we have no idea what those numbers are on there. So that is a possible use for that, for this money, if we use the lost revenue aspect of it, because school projects are part of that then. So that, you know, that's one area, we've discussed doing sewers down Route 80, that would qualify on here, so there's, there's just, there's a very broad, there's a much broader category of things that would qualify for it, and that's... And that's gonna be our job to go through, and that's what Mike was talking about, is getting a list of things together, presenting to us with estimated costs so that we have an idea of what we want to do or how we go about doing it on there.
Thank you.
Another item on the agenda was a fraud policy. We don't have one that's officially adopted, so that is going to be coming at a October, one of our October meetings. And this is from the audit, from the auditors, correct? So we have, like, a general policy in place, but we don't have a specific fraud policy. So we will be getting that on an October agenda item with one that is, that was, a draft was given to us, but it will be sent out to all the council members. And later on in our packet, we will have the final appropriation transfers, the financial report. We talked about the sewer works operating in capital, which we approved. They updated us on the Munis implementation, which they have been going to some trainings. Their target date for the new software is for next year, the fiscal year. Actually, they'll probably be running dual systems between Munis and our existing system in the hopes of transferring over to Munis for July 1st. Payroll is going to be a little bit delayed because they need to do that, it's most effective to do it at the end of a quarter. So that might be like in September, you know, after the September quarter, starting October 1st then. So that, those are their target dates. And then they gave us an update on expenditures for the high school project and the police department project, which are on our agenda under committee reports here for permanent project. So that was Finance Committee last week.
Thank you, Rose. Next we have Permanent Project Building Committee, North Branford High School update and North Branford Police Department update. Al, you wanna, or Mike?
Yeah. Yeah, Al is here tonight and I just want to point out as well that we added the, what came out of that committee, the high school road, road issue and the PD question about rebidding and what format to rebid. And it's listed as, you know, your, your construction manager at risk or general contractor. And so defer to Al in terms of the request for the, you know, PD. And then we've also got Rusty here can speak to both the high school and of course, there's another agenda item for him on the NBIS roof and facade.
So I'll just check with Rusty first. The, so the high school is still about where it was?
Right.
So, so the high school still looks good?
Yeah. So that's easy for the high school. We haven't, we haven't met as a permanent project building committee since the last time I was here, so, so we're meeting Thursday this week instead of Monday. But we did meet and talked to Bill Silver on, actually, I did meet and we did meet and did talk about, you know, looking at both sites for the PD. And so we have a proposal from Bill Silver and Chris Colo Engineering. And I'll just hit the, the highlights are, the town will review the, I mean, the team will review the town's land use regulations as it pertains to the two sites, wetland locations, et cetera. They'll have informal discussions with Connecticut DOT about both sites. They'll just simply rotate the building as currently designed and laid out for a logical orientation on both sites. They will review, they'll do an initial review of the site plans with the building committee, make revisions to the plans, and develop the listing of pros and cons on each. Then they'll summarize, they'll, yeah, they'll summarize their findings of all the things Then they will include a perspective rendering of each site so that you can, you know, have a, an artist rendition of both sites with the building sitting there and see what it looks like. And they've included in this quote, three meetings with the permanent project building committee and town council to present their findings. And that's really about it. So they're gonna do a title search for $550, a hydrant flow test at 1599. And so that's $850 of, that's the actual cost to the water company. The civil engineering fees for siding of two buildings is 5,500 fixed fee. The renderings times two and the list of pros and cons in the report is $7,000 fixed fee. And attendance to the permanent project building committee and council attendance is 2,800. So it's a total of $16,700. And you guys were gracious enough to give us $10,000 last time. So for us to go forward Thursday night, I need $6,700 more.
Question, was the rendering for two, the cost of two renderings or one based on?
It was 7,000 fixed fee for two renderings, for one in each site. So it's not 7,000 each.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and that's not just the artist fee, that's their, their list of pros and cons for both properties and the, then they report to both of us, our, our board and you guys.
So it'll be the same building, Al, they'll just turn it?
They're taking the, we're taking the building that we've already designed. They're gonna put it, you know, up in Northford and they're gonna put it down on 1599, locate it how, how, how they feel it fits in the best in both places. And then we'll have, we'll know.
Do they have any idea how long?
Oh, yeah. It did say in here, they thought they could have this done in two to three weeks, once we get them an approval.
The money.
Right. So, so I, unfortunately, I don't see any other way to stop these two properties than paying them. So do I need to, do we need to turn this in as a matter of record? Oh, you have it already. Okay. If I knew that, I wouldn't have read the points to you. So, so that's where we're at with the PD.
You guys are all right with this, Al? The building committee is okay?
Yeah. We haven't gone through this, but I mean, I'm sure that, they had given us, actually, when he walked out of our meeting, he had told us it would be 18,000. So he, he beat his guesstimate at 16-7. So if I didn't have this, I was gonna come here and ask for eight more thousand, you know?
So we got a deal?
Yeah. Yeah, we got a deal.
Okay.
So, you know, hopefully sometime later on the agenda, you guys can, can approve that. And then the high school is looking good. We were having a discussion about, it started on the high school, really the only thing that's, I mean, you know, the bids are looking good. Again, we're like right there with the total estimate, and I'm sure Rusty will speak to that. We, we got into a debate on whether we put gates on the road they went through and, and it makes sense with all the sport, all the, you know, athletes having to cross the road and get to the fields. So they were thinking of doing gates, but then everybody who's ever had a gate knows that they're gonna be broken and they're a nightmare. So we're like, what do we need a road for? So at our last meeting, we're like, let's get rid of the road. But, but also, we, we, you know, had it weighed in by the PD and the fire department and, and neither one of them think it's a good idea to get rid of the road. So, so we'll be discussing that Thursday night on what we do with either gates or, or raised sidewalk or something to make it safe for the kids to cross the road and, and not get rid of the road.
Which road are you talking about?
The new road that we're gonna build, so right now, the road goes, you know, through the, under the bridge and around.
Yes.
The new road goes towards the swamp.
Right.
And, and connects out to the parking lot.
Right.
So it's that road that we were, we were, we thought, hey, if we get rid of it, we don't need gates, then they were not a problem for, for snow plowing, they're, they're not a maintenance nightmare. Cause, is, the Board of Ed reps brought it up that, and I don't know if they talked to the board about it.
We did.
So, so it makes sense.
We're highly opposed to removing that road for life safety for many reasons, that if we did have a situation on the backside of the building and then had to exit from the front with fire apparatus, police coming in with only one way out. We currently cross that road now for our tennis courts, our softball fields, and the basketball courts, and we have a walkway, we have no problem accessing and getting across that. So we do not at all think it's a safety issue to run that road around with our bus runs and our drop offs. We need that to spread and be able to get 1,000 kids out into the buses, into the cars, for access. Right now, we have no access to the back and it's an absolute nightmare with having half of the high school kids cut through the middle school and vice versa, to get on the buses and opposite lanes so that we can go to the Northford side and the North Branford. So we discussed it, we want that road there. We feel it's, it's critical for our safety, God forbid we ever have a situation where we have 1,000 students and upwards of 150 staff members all coming out to the front side, having to exit on Route 80 with vehicles coming in, emergency apparatus, parents, as you know, when there's an emergency, the first thing they do is come to the school. And we want to have that ability to do that. I'm opposed to an electronic arm. I think it's just a recipe for a lot of expense and a lot of additional expense. Once it malfunctions, we lose cards, access points. If we're gonna do anything with that and they want a gate, we have a sliding gate on the back area now that we use, it's inexpensive and it functions quite well, where there's also obviously speed dips or speed bumps to break the traffic flow going through there, which we support 100%. But that road unequivocally is something that we want to keep in project. Thanks, Al.
Thanks.
Yeah, so I, and I, you know, I don't think, you know, we threw it out there, like, let's get rid of the road. And we got the feedback, so, you know, I can't speak for the committee, we haven't talked about it, but as far as I'm concerned, the, the road stays. The other thing we were looking at too is we were gonna save some money getting rid of the road. So, so we still have some ad alternates on the high school that we're trying to come up with the money, but we're, we're, I, I think Gil Bane's gonna rebid a couple of the, or a few of the, and again, Rusty may talk to that, he may not, some, some of the aspects of it that he felt came in high that are like two years out. So they'll be able to rebid them. So we're looking for, so some of our ad alternates that we haven't done are, you know, we were looking for a metal standing seam roof, but we may, you know, and they, we can save a lot of money by doing a PVC standing seam roof. So we're, we're actually gonna have a piece of that, I think, at our next meeting so we can just see what it is and, and, you know, see whether we're willing to do that, because that's like a four, $500,000 difference. The other thing that we, one of our ad alternates is irrigation on some of the, and that was one of, that's one of my own pet peeves. I, I think if you're gonna have this beautiful complex, you know, nothing, in my mind, there's nothing worse than walking up to a school and having all burnt up little lawns there in the, you know, in their flower beds. And Franny wants lots of flowers because he likes weeding. But no, so we're, so we're trying to figure out, you know, can we come up with the money to, and stay on budget and, and do, you know, a few of our ad alternates that, that all of us on the committee had come up with a wish list. So we've got some things settled and some things we're working on it, but we all pretty much agree as a committee that we're not going to, we're not gonna cut something out to change the, you know, change the look of what we presented to the town. You know, we, we think that, that the complex really looks good. What was it, we had a discussion about the, what was it, the concrete furniture or going, you know, so that was a lot of money, but I think we're gonna stick with, we're gonna, we're gonna swallow hard on that one and stick with, you know, bulletproof furniture, you know, sitting in the courtyard and stuff like that. So, so that's really what, that's what we're doing on the high school and, and the PD is what I talked about earlier. So, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Al.
Thanks, Al.
Rusty, do you have anything on the high school?
Yeah, I can just give you a quick update.
Well, before, I would like to make a motion, since Rusty's here, is to move item 12E, or I'm sorry, 12F up to the commission to follow the permanent project building committee so that you can just report on everything right now.
Second.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Motion by Councilor Jeloney, second by Deputy Mayor Zampino. Or Councilor Diamond?
No, I think he beat her.
Okay. All right. Tommy beat her.
I know.
What'd she say?
It's hard to deal with.
Can I have a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Rusty.
So just to give you a little bit of background, when we were going out to the state and we had our construction document estimate, Gil Bane had come back and said, you know, we can't afford everything, so we created alternates just to see how the bid environment would be and see if we could, you know, if the bids came favorable, then we could afford these alternates that, that were discussed. There's about 20 of those alternates. Those alternates were presented to the building committee, they were also presented to the Board of Education, because they both have to approve the alternates before we can go to the state. So that was done. Everybody understood that these are alternates. Hopefully the money, the bids would come in, in a, in a fashion where we could afford them all. At this point, it, we're sort of neutral, we can, we believe, or at least Gil Bane believes that we can manage the base bid work, but the alternates are unknown. We've got six big bid packages that are out, we, we're rebidding them primarily because there was either one bid on, on the bid or there was a question on the bid that when we scoped the contractors, it seemed like they didn't carry the right product or there was some confusion about the product. And these were bits that didn't have to be, that weren't necessary, for instance, like site concrete and landscaping signage, we didn't have anybody bid that. So those are the types of packages, miscellaneous metals that are right now out to bid. We hope to have all those bids backed by the end of the month. Gil Bane is submitting a third GMP for the building committee, I believe for this Thursday's meeting. So that'll be for everything that's bid and where we stand with it. So as I said, we're sort of neutral. We could be over budget if these six bids come in higher than what's anticipated, or we could be just fine. You know, they're not big ticket items, so the delta would be, would be smaller. We do still have in our construction contingency from the town side about $1.8 million, so we weren't expecting to have that much. We could probably lose some dollars from there if we needed to. But what happens is when you, when the construction cost goes up, a lot of the soft costs that are on the construction side also go up because they're percentage-based. So the 3% that the construction manager carries as a contingency also goes up. So some of the, the numbers that you see creeping up are a result of those types of multipliers that are applied to, to the hard costs that come in. So we'll, we'll know a lot more by the end of the month in terms of where we stand finally with, with the bids. But we have reviewed all the alternates with the, with the building committee last week and then with the Board of Ed, and I went through the same alternates with the Board of Ed, because the building committee did say that they, there were some that they deferred to the board and said that this is really a Board of Ed decision. And so we did that, I mean, the case in point is, you know, we had an alternate that's, let's reduce the cabinetry in, in each column by three feet. There's a value to it, it's about $40,000. But the board needed to understand that if they, if they reduce that, you really can't add it back in. So that's one that they've gotta think about and say, okay, we really want that alternate because if we don't accept that alternate, we won't get it in the future. But with that But with that in mind, obviously there has to be funding for that too, so, there's, all of these things have to be resolved before the final project can be, I mean, we can know exactly where we stand. Uh, I mean, if, if everybody chooses to do some of these alternates, like for instance, the security gates, uh, the number on it is about seventy-five thousand dollars, but there's a security component that's being rebid, so it might be well into closer to a hundred thousand, but based on feedback that I'm just hearing today, uh, that, you know, that there's not a lot of, of support for the gates, but that then goes away, then we're not gonna worry about the gate, that alternate doesn't have to be accepted. So, these are decisions that the building committee will make, uh, along, you know, and with the guidance and some discussion with the Board of Ed. So, that's where we are on the high school. We did create a, a concept plan for, suggested at the building committee meeting, and I sent those plans to the Police Department, the Fire Marshal, and the, uh, and the building official and to, you know, to, to Mike also, to, to make sure that everybody was in, you know, didn't have any issues, and obviously they did, because I had mentioned to the building committee that those are approvals we need to get, our agreements we need to get, because that was all part of our zoning approvals when we received the approvals from the town, so we couldn't just make a decision and, and move forward without that feedback. So, that will be, again, discussed at next Thursday meetings, so that's where we are overall with the high school.
So, have we started construction, or are we still in demolition phase? Where are we?
We finished the demolition, the hazmat and demolition phase for that first L shape on the diamond is done, they're beginning to mobilize and concrete will be coming in soon, so foundations will start to happen, um, so that, you know, they've created all the barriers and the sub-middles are coming in to us, uh, because you approved, uh, the concrete steel, uh, concrete steel and demo package that had been approved earlier as a, as, uh, uh, general, uh, the GMP two, uh, and the reason for that was because we needed to get the steel ordered right away, uh, because of the lead times, in fact, that caused quite a delay because of the lead times with steel. Uh, the good news was we got really good bits on the steel, uh, but the bad news is that the delay was still there, it's to, to get the material is, is part of the challenge. Uh, so, from a concrete and steel point of view, that, that's beginning to happen, the shop drawings and all those things are, they, are gonna move forward. This net, next package that the GMP, that the, that the building committee will get, will include, you know, numerous other packages, like the mechanicals and the, and the electrical and all those packages. What's interesting is a lot of the big ticket item, the bigger, more expensive packages came in ad or under budget, but some of the smaller packages came in higher, so that's why the, the balance of some being high and some being low leaves us sort of flat in, in the overall budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, on the intermediate school, I did put a little...
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So, much of it is really, just as a reminder, if you recall, we started the process by looking at the, the building facade, the masonry, uh, and then as we started to kind of understand where the water is coming from and how it's impacting the facade, uh, it became very apparent that really the parapet is one of the key areas where the water is, the way it was designed is it's all flowing towards the front of the building, so it comes right down the face of the brick. Um, when we looked at some of the details that were designed, that there were some changes made that, so that the, the way it was built is not exactly the way it was designed, but apparently there had been some discussion during construction and there were revised drawings issued. So, with that in mind, we, we went through that process, we came to the council, because we, we talked about the fact that the roof is a, a major contributing factor, it's, if you go up there and you look at it, it's just like, there's joint, there's patches pretty much all over the place, um, for the most part, it's, it's fine, uh, there are some areas that apparently there, there's more water getting in, uh, so, uh, when we looked at it, we said we wouldn't design the roof that way, we wouldn't have to do a redesign. A couple of other things that, that, that really came out, uh, was the drainage of the roof, not just for the water that flows over the, over the face, but even the, the water that goes towards the drains, there are certain regulations about the size of the, of the gutters and the downspouts and the drains and backup systems, so, a lot of the backup systems are taking the water from one roof, putting it onto another roof, uh, didn't quite meet all the criteria, we felt, we feel that, that plumbing system, the whole drainage system on the, on the roof has to be redone. Uh, so those are the two components of the, of this particular project, there are other items, such as the fact that the masonry, the joining of the masonry, uh, you know, it involves a number of things, and what I tried to do is identify for you all the different components of what needs to happen on the building, and that's what the, the, the budget, which is the last page, is all about. I mean, I have some images, you've seen these images before we presented them, but it really falls into, you know, five or six major categories. The first was the building facade itself, so that involves power washing it, repointing it, or fixing in the parapet, for instance, re, repointing it and then, and power washing it again, and then sealing it, so there's several components to that. There are also, and I have some pictures on, and one of the pictures depicts this, is some of the windows, the frames have come out, the caulking is, uh, you know, has peeled away, there are expansion joints that are, that caulking has cracked and needs to be replaced, so all of that would be part of this repair for the, the masonry facade. Then the second big component is the roof replacement, and the approach, and we did have, in fact, the council funded the, the thermal scan and the, the aerial that was done, uh, for the entire roof, uh, and we did take a, a, a look at that, so, our approach was to not have the water come, you know, to change really the direction of how the water flows on the roof, which we go to a more conventional system where instead of it just sheet feeding off the, the face, the facade, we will capture it and all of it will come back in towards the roof, up to, to drains that are appropriately sized, and then have backup systems to meet code, you know, that's what needs to happen, and so that's, that's what the second component is for the, for the roof replacement, uh, so, and that does involve some, so, because we have a lot of mechanical systems on the roof, we have to, so now work around those systems, so we may have to, in some cases, raise the systems up, so then you have to bring a crane to raise up the equipment, so we can properly flash it and, and do the work in a way that's gonna, you know, maintain the integrity of the roof. So, that's all factored into it, so when you see HVAC and electrical, uh, budgets in there, that's what it's, uh, the type of work it's referring to. So, we would have engineers, you know, look at that and, and, and give us documents to, to really address how that would work. Uh, we put in numbers for site improvements, and really what it is, is when we have the drains come down, we need to bring them and take them underground to the storm system, because you don't want that water flowing on the, on the sidewalks, the trees in the winter, and so it's a hazardous condition, so we've carried some numbers for, for that, for that condition as well. Uh, and then the rest of it is general contractors, overhead profit, general conditions. I'm, I'm carrying a healthy contingency, just because we all know what's been happening with supply chain, right now, insulation, and roof insulation is so hard to get, we've had projects that have been bid, and we've got a couple with the state, a couple with some towns, they're just still waiting, they don't even, they don't even have a date for when the installation's gonna arrive, um, so that, you know, there's a concern there. Uh, so, to us, the sooner you get bid, you go out to bid, you get a contractor, place the order, the better off you are, um, you know, hopefully, over time, that supply chain issue will, will diminish, but at this point, we're carrying some, a, a good contingency for that very reason. Uh, and then the final component is just the project development, which includes testing, there's some bonding costs in there, uh, some, there are design fees in there, uh, and some money for the clerical works. So, overall, and we're looking at about four point five roughly million dollar project already.
So, is it a total roof replacement on the whole building?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and I know there's been talk, um, so we have, I believe the high school is gonna be a pitched roof, correct?
Yes.
And the auditorium is, so is there, could we do an ad alternate to do a pitched roof on the middle school so that, you know, the, the campus, if we're gonna do a new roof on that building, and I know Al was on the council at the time, like, after we had some other issues, like no more flat roofs, and NBIS ended up to be a flat roof, and now we're paying for it, um, on here, so, I think we need to at least look at it, I mean, we did it when we redid the roof at the elementary school up in Northford and bid it as an ad alternate, and the whole building couldn't have a pitched roof, but we did it, we made the decision to do it where we could on that building, on there.
And I would say you can definitely look at it from that same perspective, because you do have some large pieces of equipment on this roof.
Right.
Uh, that, and so we'd have to do some structural framing, uh, just as we're doing at the high school. At the high school, we've sort of, we do have some flat sections, so don't, don't think it's all pitched, because where the equipment is, we've got a sort of a well in there, that's a flat roof, um, but that's, you know, contained, the rest of it is pitched, and that's what we'd have to look at for, for this project as well. Just know that that's, there's a, a fairly significant increase in cost, because now you're talking about structural framing for the, the pitched roof, the gable roofs, uh, but certainly it could be designed as an alternate, I mean, we did that, uh, while we didn't do a flat versus, uh, gable, but rather a different, you know, a PVC versus a metal roof, so that's a more of a product, uh, where in this case it'll be two different roof systems.
And, so, under site improvements, you have sidewalks and paving, so is that tearing up the sidewalks and putting new sidewalks in?
Precisely.
And I believe at the high school, are you talking about heated sidewalks at, in the high school project to prevent?
We have, uh, heated, uh, right at the, at the entrances under the canopies, we couldn't afford to have all the sidewalks, uh, so it's just gonna be the main entrance, uh, that's gonna have a heated, uh, heated, you know, heated sidewalks at that.
So, if we're tearing up the sidewalks here at NBIS, I, I think we need to look at that, I mean, if you're gonna do it at the high school and it's the same campus, it's right there in the entrances.
At NBIS, currently, we have heated sidewalks on both sides of the main entrance.
The main entrance.
They're there.
All right. Okay.
This is what we're doing, uh, at the high school as well.
Right.
This, this cutting and patching may, you know, we have to analyze where it'll actually come out and we'll try and avoid doing that. If we can connect without cutting into the pavement and the, and the sidewalk, we'll certainly want to, that'll be the priority, but for right now, we're just carrying a budget line item for it, because we don't have the, the, the final solution there.
Are that, the sidewalks heated at the auditorium near the entrance?
I don't believe so. Franny, you don't have any heat at the front of your auditorium sidewalk?
No, no.
We are replacing a, a section, because we're trying to push the extent of how much you're replacing at, with, with the high school project, so it comes more or less about a third of the way in towards the, the high school, the auditorium, only because of the condition of the sidewalk, so, but, but that's not heated at this point.
Okay.
Right, you're, as far as this, again, on the sidewalks, I don't think you're referring to ripping all the sidewalks up.
No, just to cut, a cut and a patch. Right. It'd be a trench, just to, so we may take, you know, they're like a five by five section, so we'd probably cut them at the joints, at the, at the, uh, the natural joints there, remove that section and run the, the piping underneath and then put a new piece back there, and hopefully we don't have to do any of it, but I, I have a feeling we'll need to do something.
Uh-huh. So, what's your estimated timeframe to have, you know, like, bid specs ready?
We need to get an approval to, for us to proceed to that, to, to do the bid specs, we're ready to start at any time, so we need just approval to go to that, to, I don't know if it's from the council or from the committee or whoever gives us approval to move forward.
Yeah, I think it'd be a combination of, of, if the council wants to move it forward, move, you know, moving it forward to the Permanent Project Building Committee, and then giving the okay, green light to go to specs.
Okay.
Because our contract was for the facade of it, uh, the, the, the building facade, but we didn't ever do construction documents, because that money was used to also then investigate the roof, so it would have to be an amendment to our contract.
So, so in the last council agenda meeting, we had an estimate, like ninety-seven thousand dollars.
Right.
So, is that what you're talking about then?
Right.
And that's the whole project then?
That's correct.
Roof, facade, we already allocated for facade, so that's the additional cost?
Right.
For the roof and everything? Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? No, I think you're good. Thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay. Uh, next, we have Communications Subcommittee.
Okay, I think it's important that the council get up to speed and have some more information about the third major project going on in town, and I think you guys haven't had that opportunity in a while, so I, you'll bear with me, I'm gonna kind of go over a number of the things. Um, first of all, in order to have communication work in all parts of town, you need a new tower in North Bramford and a new tower in Northford. Now, when we had a meeting on the fifteenth of September, we spent a lot of time with Vin Marino discussing the, uh, contract. The, uh, people that would put the contract, the, uh, tower up on Tilcon Mountain would be ARX, it would be a hundred and eighty foot tower with a standard lease. Um, I think it's important that the council understand, though, what, what, what that lease would entail. It would be, first of all, it would be a municipal tower, our rental fee would be twelve hundred dollars a month, but for every additional, for every carrier that ARX could get on the tower, it would reduce our monthly fee by four hundred dollars, so if we had three carriers on there, then we wouldn't be paying any kind of a monthly fee. Um, we have the right, as a town, to locate permitted equipment and frequencies. The frequency for the town is priority, so if anybody else goes on the tower, our frequency is the priority, because that's going up there as a municipal tower. We will pay our own utilities, we will have the opportu, we will have space for an equipment shed, you have to have an equipment shed, and, um, there'll be a pad for that and there'll be a pad for our generator. I think one of the things that was a concern to the committee is, this, you know, ARX has a contract with Tilcon, but what about us if something happens between ARX and Tilcon? Do we get stuck? So, we talked at length about, there probably should be a contract between the town and Tilcon to make sure that we don't get, you know, all of a sudden, something happens between ARX and Tilcon, and, you know, we have a tower up there, we need it, so I think that's probably gonna be another step in this process, but that, that's the part in terms of North Bramford. Um, I think, I think Vin will probably work on that, and I'm sure the chief and deputy chief are here, if they want to add anything to that, that particular tower.
Yeah, we're, we're just waiting for some warning from Attorney Marino on that, how to approach Tilcon to move forward with some sort of an agreement, uh, in the event a fallout happens between ARX and Tilcon.
Okay, so then the next, um, piece we discussed, we just, we had a discussion, this was a Zoom meeting with Paul Zeta, who is our consultant, and, um, right now he's having difficulty getting the equipment pricing for Motorola, that's the next step, you need, in order to get this whole communication system going, you need to know how much the equipment's gonna cost, what we need. Um, he's hoping to get a price list by the end of this week, and it was interesting that he also pointed out, the state has to approve our equipment and our price list, because obviously we're gonna be part of a, of a state network. The next part, um, is very important and something we have to talk about tonight, and that's the other tower, the tower in Northford. The tower in Northford's gonna be on private property at two hundred twenty-two Clintonville The next part is very important and something we have to talk about tonight, and that's the other tower, the tower in Northford. The tower in Northford's going to be on private property at 222 Clintonville Road. That's going to be a Verizon tower. It's going, that one is going to only be 110 feet high, and it's going to be disguised as a pine tree. I don't know if anybody's ever seen those towers, I think there are a lot of them on the Parkway.
They don't look like a pine tree.
No.
They look like a ton of pine trees.
They don't, we're near, look like a pine tree.
Well, that's what they call it. They call it a monopine, by the way. North Branford will have two public safety antennas on that tower. The critical piece right now is, the lawyers for, and you have a copy on your packet, the lawyers have sent a letter to the town about their, you know, their procedures and what has to happen. The important thing is that we need to have a public hearing to give residents an opportunity to speak about that particular tower. Because that's a Verizon tower, it's on private property, it's in a, you know, you have to give the town residents an opportunity. We're, Mike and I talked about this, I think it's important to have that particular hearing as a separate hearing, a meeting from a town council meeting. And Mike and I talked about, perhaps we should probably schedule it for NBIS, just to be on the safe side, because you could get, there's always the potential of having a lot of people there. There has to be a 15-day notice in the paper. So in terms of the time requirements before Homeland can bring that particular tower proposal to the Connecticut Siding Council, because that one is going to have to go to the Connecticut Siding Council, because it's not a, it's not a municipal tower, now that's, you're talking about a, it's a Verizon tower on private property. We're talking about, if the council will agree to this, if we can get something in the newspaper by Friday, doing something the week of October 25th. The other thing is, because this is in a historic district, it has to go to another agency in the state called SHIPO, because they have to make sure that it doesn't interfere in any way with the historical significance of Northford. So there are a lot of pieces that have to go to the state, and if, but the first step is a public hearing of the town. So we're recommending, I don't know if people want to look at their calendar, or if you feel, sometime the week of the 25th of October. Anybody have any thoughts about that week?
Marie, first of all, where is 222 in relation to?
Pardon?
Where is 222?
You know where, if you go down, the only I can describe this.
Petri plumbing?
It's where it says Petri plumbing.
Yeah.
That's right, it's, but it's back, it's way back there. And what, and it, there's a road there already. I think that Homeland, it's not in the letter, but when I've been to meetings with Homeland, they will, Verizon, we're not going to have to pay any mental fee for that tower, they will give us room, you know, for our equipment shed, and they, Verizon will let us use their generator. So we wouldn't have to pay for, we're going to have to pay for a generator on the other one, but this one, Verizon would give us use of their generator, they would give us the opportunity, and I think they'll even give us some money towards our equipment shed. But it's way in the back, there is a, there is a, I know somebody's going to question about the school there, there, it is, the state requirement is it has to be 250 feet away from a school, and it is more than that away from the school. And it will, if you look at the sightlines, it's going to be very, it's not going to be that visible for most parts of Northford.
Question, so the other site would be a municipal location?
The other side is municipal, this one can't be.
And any provider can come in, right? So this would just be Verizon, and no other carrier could come, any other carrier, we either have to make a deal with Verizon or come in directly?
But then, the other issue again is, do we, as a town, also want to have a contract with that homeowner whose property is on? Again, the same thing could happen there that happened at Tilcon, should we have a separate contract with that homeowner? And I think that's something that Ben has to look at as well.
And so you're saying, if that were the case, we would have the, we would be leasing the property, and Verizon would?
That's a, that tower belongs, that's a Verizon, in other words, that's Verizon's tower. This tower at Tilcon is a municipal tower.
Marie, how close is it to the school?
It's, I know that it's more than 250 feet away, I don't know the exact.
It's on the other side of 22?
I don't, I don't know the exact.
So it would be more than?
No, the, near the ACES, though, it's right near the ACES.
The ACES school is in that area, but it's, it's more than 250 feet away from that school, which is what the, what the state requires.
But what I'm kind of referring to is before, when they were talking about putting the antenna by the intermediate school, how close was that to the school? Because I remember there was a lot of people that came in that were very vocal.
That was at TDS.
TDS, yeah, how close was that to that?
I, I don't, I don't know.
Remember, there was a lot of commotion about being so close to the school?
There was a lot of commotion about that, yes.
And, you know, radio waves and everything else.
That's why you have to have a public hearing, you have to give people the opportunity. Right.
Because there definitely were some people that were upset.
See, the thing is, that whole project with Homeland was going on while we were discussing the tower near TDS, in other words, they were doing their own thing with Verizon. And then, when they found out that that didn't work, then they came to us, offering us a spot on that tower.
And do we need both of these towers, no matter where the police station ends up?
We absolutely need the tower in Northford and a tower in that section of North Branford. Those are where the two dead spots are.
Okay, so it doesn't matter where the police department?
Right.
Ends up, we still need those two towers?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's very important for us to have this public hearing, if you guys are agreeable to sometime in the week of the 25th. Is there, does anybody have a preference on a day?
Wednesday or Thursday.
Wednesday or Thursday? Mike, I don't know if she's?
Yeah, that's, I think it's, we're going to be working with the board of ed on trying to get the intermediate school cafeteria, I think would be the best venue, you know, we could have, certainly, this is available that week, that wouldn't be a problem, but in case there is a, you know, a larger crowd, we have 65 capacity, we wouldn't have to want to shut down and move. And essentially, just to clarify, the, as Marie said, that the, this is a private deal on a, on a private piece of land that the Homeland Towers has, is working with Robinson Coles, a legal firm, that is putting all of this process in terms of the application together, so notifying the town, and I have the full detailed report, should any council member want that, it's pretty thick, but I can make copies, or you can view that. But as part of the process, so it's not our, obviously, it's not our property, it's not our tower, but it's going to be something that fits in terms of municipal benefit for us, be able to use that tower in locating equipment there, that they've indicated to us that, you know, should the council decide they'd like a public informational meeting, they'll run the show and do it, and then we are basically helping them to host the public informational meeting. And I just felt that combining it with a town council meeting on either the 5th, and the 5th wouldn't work, it would have to be the 19th, it would just be get, it would be too complicated to try and get that done, depending on, and maybe nobody shows up, but I highly doubt it, and I think there'll be people that'll be concerned and want to ask questions about it, so I think the intermediate cafeteria, intermediate school cafeteria is probably the best venue in that week of the 25th should hopefully work, if not, we have this as a backup location.
So if the public, so it's a public hearing, the public comes out, and they're vehemently opposed to it being there, but since it's on private property and everything else, there's really nothing the council can do.
Right, in a sense, I think, in my mind, and maybe David weighs in, but it's not the town do, like we just did a public hearing for water, you know, sewer fees, this isn't our project per se, in saying, our tower or our piece of property, and having a hearing, they're saying it as a, it is a public informational meeting, and I think it's the right thing to do, I mean, the town could say, well, we don't want to do that, we don't think you should do that, but I think it's the right thing to do when you have a public informational meeting.
If you look at the letter from Robinson Cole in your packet, it's part of the siding council process, that they have to, in order to get approval, the siding council show that they've had a public hearing, or tried to have a public hearing in the town, so that they can report back what the, what the, you know, town residents think of it, so that's something that the siding council takes into consideration when they ask for approval of the siding council. This council doesn't approve the hearing, but it's information that they have to present as part of the siding council approval process, that residents oppose, residents are in favor, the residents resist, or whatever, whatever comes out of that public hearing.
Okay.
I really think we have an obligation to do that, I mean.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I'll be in contact with, I believe it's attorney Kevin Baldwin from Robinson Coles, so we'll work again, and we'll work with the school, if we can get that venue, we'll get that venue, if not, we'll use this as a backup.
Mr. Ray, before you leave committee reports, we have two proposals tonight, one from Rusty, one from Bill Silver, that involve money. There was no formal votes to proceed with either of those.
Well, I think we're just going to add an item under, under new business.
To formally adopt both of those?
Yeah, so, well, there, I, the one from, do we have anything from Rusty?
Yeah, page 68 of the thing is Rusty's for 91-7.
Okay.
A contract amendment, so I think we formally should adopt that, approve that, and we'll do a supplement purchase order, and the same with the Bill Silver one earlier on.
Is 60?
16-7, something like that.
So it's 6,700, because we already appropriated 10.
Right. The additional amounts, that we're proceeding with the full 16-7, and we'll do a purchase order to that effect.
Okay, so we'll just amend the agenda to add those.
Thank you.
Okay, we all set?
I think so.
All right, town managers' report, Mike?
Yeah, so the COVID report is in your packet, the third page is really the most telling, I think, with respect to the North Branford monthly cases, at this point, tracking 31. If you notice in the graph there, in August, we recorded 90, July was 22, so you saw that spike in July, which we were kind of concerned about, and again, 90, peaked at 90, and now running halfway through September, we're 31, if that holds, will be less than August, so maybe that is that, that sort of plateau and, and sort of retraction, we hope, in terms of that's coming down in a reversal trend, that would be, would be positive light. So we continue to monitor that, again, we're meeting every week to look over those numbers and to talk about boosters, and where it's going with boosters, with vaccination clinics, and still, of course, testing where needed. There are also further information, new packet, new, new slides in there, just toward the end, that, a little bit more information on, you know, guidance on travel, both domestic and international, as folks and, or the nation's vaccinations climb, and, you know, there are hotspots here and there, so, so the guidance there from the CDC. So again, it's just, you know, wait and see, keep monitoring, hoping the numbers keep retracting, and that August was just an anomaly, and, you know, maybe the Delta variant, I'm not sure, but we'll keep running the numbers and keep reporting.
Okay. Next is update on American Rescue Plan, federal stimulus money?
Yeah, I really don't have much, I think Rose had done a great job in covering most of our conversation in the finance committee meeting that we had last week, and I'll continue to work on the information and projects and the process, to try and come back at a future meeting, and so we can better understand how we want to proceed with the next steps.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Next, we have number nine, community events and presentations. We have the presentation of QSCEND.com on the website, design.
Yeah, the person is going to be virtual.
They need the screen?
Yeah, please, thank you, Tom. Okay, Myrna, I'm getting you onto the screen, one second. Okay, we could see your presentation, if you want to start.
Great, thank you, Anthony, so much. Good evening, everyone. Fighting heat mess, always been a long day. I will try my best to be this deep. You'll stop me at any time if you have questions, and let's get started. You should be able to see my screen, showing our logo for C-10. My name is Myrna, I'm the account executive, I'm also a developer.
Myrna, hang on one second.
I can answer. Yes?
Hang on one second, Myrna.
Thank you, Tom.
We can't hear, we can't hear.
Anthony, is there a way she can come in personally?
Uh, not yet, no. Try again, Myrna.
Can you see the screen?
We can see the screen, we just can't hear.
Yeah, audio's not the best, but go ahead.
So, let me start again. My name is Myrna, I'm the account executive, I'm also a front end developer for C-10 Technologies. The focus, our effort, on local municipalities, so everything I'm talking about remains the bar. A little bit about us, we have customers all over the US, of course, we have concentrations in the Northeast, the best here we're located, but you can see in these four areas, we have customers everywhere. Founded back in 98, like so many tech companies, with the web sites and the new ones, but we also have a citizen repack management system in addition. But our software actors, local government, is of course, a way of managing the website within this year, a way of scheduling, calendaring software for the meetings, and of course, a way of emailing and notifying constituents, residents, everyone involved, things that are happening. You also have online submitting platforms, yes, you can do PDFs, but we also have a database where you can do online forms. And of course, a way of managing your staff while they're using the website. Citizen adenda, not going to go into great detail, since I usually talk to IT personnel, seeing this is a. seeing this is a meeting in the evening with non-users, I will keep this brief. But essentially, drag and drop capability for uploading minutes, how it appears on the front end for anyone wanting to look up these documents and find them, drag and drop, or I'm sorry, a dropdown, very easy to use. And the same happens with navigation, filling the mega menu, the sidebar, all those different areas. App control by holders, very easy for anyone used to using a PC. So, we are not expecting our users to really spend a lot of time learning new software. If you understand holders, you can understand the backend. Different ways of displaying things are nice, but let's go ahead and exit out of this. And let's focus on actual examples, because now we're getting into some technicalities. They're boring, so let me switch over. And I will present my screen here. Are you able to see it now?
Yes.
Okay, okay, great. So, of course, we're looking at your current website, just gonna start here. And I wanted to point out, I did notice Economic Development does have its own template. It does appear to be a part of the same website, so I have a comment for that. And they're more than welcome to keep the same trend of having their own working style. Our software has no problem at all handling multi-site setup, so not a problem, but just wanted to pump that out. As far as the calendar and upgrade, just for the day-to-day things, New York does use a popover. I will point out that although we can do a popover, I'm just trying to show that what we end up doing instead for anyone on a mobile device is we have the page loaded open on a phone. It would be, you know, format that would fit with all of them. Ways to return to the main calendar, see everything, see the agenda that's attached, add to their own Google Calendar, Outlook, iTunes, however they like it set. And on the same page, they can also access all municipal vendors, all boards and premises, if they want to switch around from their selectmen to a different board, they could just go here and see them all. Do you have meetings, all of that accessed right here. As far as mega menus go, different styles, different ways of doing it, really depends on what fits for you. And what it looks like, I can certainly upfit that. Another example, Waterbury, Connecticut, just wanted to show you in terms of aesthetics and more pleasing way of showing a list of items. We've had this page as an example, the collection, and that is a part of their governor's collection. We also have the town of Branford, different, look entirely, but I did want to point out different ways of showing things. Get a two column layout for events as opposed to single, single columns. So, if you go to the town here, Branford, and you can see different ways of displaying meetings, announcements, a lot of it, so. Once again, out here. Also wanted to show you an interface, how once you start moving through the website, how you access things. So, of course, you still have a main menu, but in addition to that, you have where you've been, where you are, and where you can go from here. Again, making it as easy as possible, making clean. As far as editing something like this, this looks very fancy here. But for municipal staff, for users, it looks more like a Word document, very simple. They're just gonna put like, and start typing, but it's going to look really nice and pretty on the front end. So, they're not fussing with fancy objects that make sense. Things like the sidebar, contact information, they do not have to add this to every single page, meaning that's labor-intensive app stuff. These can be configured to auto-copy themselves on users that make sense. So, anything that's to be put, they'll have a to be put information. So, easy access if anyone wants to know what we've done, hours, all that, depending on which one it is. There will be each, again, this is another example of a customer, this one's just very different in what's in style. Put away the alert bar. The main menu is much broader than what I've gone to so far, but again, customizable, whatever makes sense for you, I can build it. As we go down, they did ask that their menus follow the user down. Again, this is a preference, that and it here can certainly be asked to do as well. Whatever look at us, you enjoy, not a problem. Your inspiration website does not have to be one of ours. I work on any entire installation. And finally, I'm gonna show you Nagakaka's, a quick peek. This has not launched yet, so we're looking at an at the end of development website, just a sneak peek. Again, very different menus, I wanted to show you. It'll certainly be a different style, it's more open, much more active finger pits in terms of you rolling down before actually going anywhere, start clicking on any button. They also have a broad light use, of course, they haven't gotten in here yet, they still need to schedule their training. So, these are default images pulled in by the system. But assuming they selected image, these will look a little bit nicer, not so divided. And of course, always can put in a showcase down here. So, if you have an app or anything else that you want to showcase, so people know about it, always add that into the design and satisfy that advertising space, but we do have active follow-up. So, as far as looking at different examples, what's available? Would you be interested in seeing the backend, or is that too much information for this meeting and show you at a different time? How would you like me to see some of your questions, the more technical?
I, I think that's probably good for tonight, Myrna.
I think so, I don't want to overwhelm you. And it's pretty late, so I'm so sorry, going.
No.
For having to go through this, so I hope this wasn't boring.
No, not at all, not at all.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Any concerns, anything you'd like to know before I let you get on to the rest of your view?
No, I appreciate your time, Myrna, thank you.
Great, thank you all for having me and for tonight.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Bye-bye.
Anthony, how many companies have asked to?
Uh, gonna have like five or six come before you with demonstrations. And again, the premises, we want to try to garner bits and pieces from each of these as we redesign our website to get the best of all these different bits and pieces. We do our RFP. And talking with Deputy Chief, he's also looking to do something with the PD website. So, maybe we can package that at the same time when we go out to bid, encompass both of those, and
Okay.
Get them both going.
Good idea. Okay, Mike, you all set?
Yes.
All right, next I have North Branford Fire Department, two thousand twenty-one, open house.
Yep, just a flyer for informational purposes, that's a.
Yeah, I think the four companies are open, right? Anthony, four?
Yeah, all four companies are participating, invited you to stop by, they're doing little demonstrations and just, you know, glad if anybody needs any, we're gonna have smoke detectors and CO detectors there. If anybody needs them for the public, we'll have the usual, you know, plastic fire hats and badges and for little kids and stuff, coloring books. So, encourage people to stop by the firehouses, ten to twelve on October second.
October second?
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next, next I have citizen statements, petitions, and correspondence. Nothing. All right, next is, you guys, Mike, you don't have anything, do you?
No reservations or appointments, no.
Okay. All right, so we'll move to number twelve, unfinished business. Discussion in action, update on North Farms Park fence.
Yeah, still moving along, we're at the point now where we're looking at a third-party vendor coming in to make the corrections, develop a punch list to go through and then resolve with the contractor. Be meeting with Vin again tomorrow to hash that out.
Okay. Next is a word of RFQ slash P, number four, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, clerk of the works for New North Branford Police Department from Permanent Project Building Committee.
We still have the table there.
Yeah, still not ready for action.
Okay. Next is review and a proposed amendment for intermunicipal animal control agreement. This is with Branford.
Yes, this is what I, we've been, right.
Is there a timeline on this?
Yeah, I mean, they'd like to know whether we're in or out and, and, and again, looking for guidance from the councils to what information you might, further information you might need and want to pursue. But I think that, I think with the last meeting and Jamie Cosgrove being here, you know, I think the numbers, certainly continued fundraise and the number helps, but I don't know if there's any additional information you read, you need from them at this point, but certainly happy to request it if there's anything missing.
I, I did ask for something at a previous meeting, and when they made those presentations, what I didn't see was, we had those call numbers for North Branford, but I don't think we ever saw the call numbers for Branford. And I'm just curious as to what the differences are.
If it's a one-third, two-thirds?
Yes.
I mean, that was, that was the question initially.
Not just based on geographic or popular, I want to know like, how many calls do we get? How many calls and?
Is it really one-third?
Yeah. If it's the same, okay, but you know, I just wanted, I would just want to know.
And I presume, Mike, that you have not been able to find any other town that would even consider us joining?
Consider, yes, I, I, I think it's all about apples to apples, right? I mean, I think you heard the presentation, you know, Cosgrove, I think, does considerably more than if we were to look at other towns that they were into, to talk with us about an agreement and what that would look like if, you know, say Guilford would be just, you know, dogs and that would be it. And, and, you know, Wallingford, I'm not sure, I haven't, you know, gotten that far, didn't get a chance to talk with the mayor there, but.
I would kind of be, I would be opposed to Wallingford based on the attitude towards the dog pound.
Yeah, and then capacity issues in More Haven with their agreement with Anden and.
I assume Guilford has some similar other types of, they have some agricultural base there as well, so I'm curious as to whether they have capacity or not.
So, do you have to have, and one of the questions, I guess, do you have to have an animal control facility, or what happens if you don't? I mean, are you, are you mandated that you have to?
Well, actually, I don't know that we're mandated to have animal control, and I've never considered that. I don't know the answer to that.
And, and, I mean, I know, I mean, Cosgrove does an excellent job in what they do, and it's not just dogs, you know, it's, it's a whole array of animals. And so, is there a minimum that you have to do? I mean, and Jamie Cosgrove said a number of times last week that, or the last meeting, is that it was for service, like the contract was for service only. But that's not the way we're seeing it. It's, it's, you know, it's service, and now there's this huge capital piece on top of it.
Yeah, I think they do excellent stuff, excellent programming for us. We are so grateful for the partnership, but I do think that there is a rational question about the fairness and what we should be paying for. I mean, we have no.
We had no say.
We have no say in, again, that building. Now, we're going to double our annual costs, it's pretty outrageous and incredible. Double your costs per year when there has been no change, I assume, in our animal calls or anything. To double that cost is pretty amazing.
Could we just pay them the fee and not pay for the building upgrade? To say we want to continue paying the fee, is that possible?
Right.
That we're not gonna pay for the upgrade, that's.
All municipalities must have an animal control officer. Twenty-five thousand population, that's a full-time animal control officer. Smaller ones could have a part-time. So, you have to have an animal control officer, first state statute.
Okay, thank you.
Probably have to have someplace to put the animals to find.
Well, maybe that new rendition or?
Couldn't Franny do that?
Well, maybe it's a new program that the high school can implement. It's a vet tech or something.
So, Mike, in the, in our current contract, it says that we're responsible for this capital improvement, right?
Right, I think that, yeah, that's the way we're.
Is, is there any possibility of approaching them to try to amend that, or is that kind of out of the question?
So, I, and to, can I, can you back up to your question? Our agreement, was that developed predating this plan for this massive expansion?
Yes.
Because how does the contract, is it endless, like it comes, it doesn't, you know, what if someone says, okay, yeah, we'll pay for whatever the costs are to the existing thing that was there the day that we made the agreement? But then do they get to say that they're gonna build the Taj Mahal and then we can just?
We have to pay.
Endlessly have, have, the, the circumstances of their capital expenses have completely changed. It's a new facility, if they're building, if they're breaking ground on a new facility. Does that change the contract, is the legal question?
So, I haven't seen the contract, but I've played with intermunicipal agreements, and typically, they will skull out circumstances under which you are responsible for capital improvements and other costs, what percentages based upon whatever's negotiated at the time of municipal agreement. Plus, there is often a procedure for withdrawal and what happens if, if a town decides to withdraw. So, I haven't seen this particular intermunicipal agreement, but that's, you know, those legitimate questions, you have to look at the agreement and then would have to look at it or somebody would have to say, this is what the agreement allows, this is what it requires, this is how you get out of it if you don't want to do it. You can always amend it, there's usually provisions that say they can be amended, but it requires, depending upon how many municipalities are involved, it requires a majority, it requires this, or if it's just two municipalities.
Just think of how, how large the capital scenario can change.
Right.
Could we ask Vinnie what it would cost to break the contract? What would happen if we broke it?
Well, I'm guessing the cost is for us to hire an animal control officer in the facility.
And then you have to have a place to put your hands.
Yeah, we're, as Anthony just read, mandated and so, you know, finding out, you know, where we end up in terms of co-locating, I don't think, my understanding of history is that we got out of it, it was very expensive, costly to maintain a facility and personnel so that in the past, when they formed the agreement, it was economically advantageous to do that. At this point, I have not done any, you know, study of what it would cost us to do it on our own, and I was just scratching the surface about going to another municipality off a better surface.
I'm not saying to do it on our own, I'm saying if we were to break that contract and tell them we'll pay, you know, what we were paying plus another percentage, like increase it. So, in other words, they would be getting the way it was and a little bit more, but eliminating the whole upgrade part, because that's kind of the part we're all having a problem with is the whole upgrade.
I think I.
So, not that we want to leave them, not that we want to break the relationship, but the, my big problem is that whole, you know, it's like an open-end upgrade, like.
Yeah.
What she's saying, I mean, what's, that's our problem, is that extra chunk. That it's not gonna be a building in our town, we're not gonna have it, it's, it's not ours. So, that's.
Ideal scenario would be for us to maintain that relationship that we have with Cosgrove, but I want them to make their case. They came and gave us some really compelling anecdotes, but I would like to see their share of what they are using in terms of animal response versus ours, and if they're willing to come to the table and looking at those numbers and talk about. Because they did not come with those numbers when they came last week, or last meeting. They did not come with that. They came with compelling stories, and I'm very sympathetic to that, but there were no numbers as to what Branford is utilizing. They came with compelling stories and I'm very sympathetic to that, but there were no numbers as to what Grandford is utilizing versus what we're utilizing. We saw ours alone, but I would like to see Grandford's utilization number.
Mike, let me get this straight, what are yearly money that we pay them? Is that doubling, is that supposed to double?
Well, it's, it's, we roughly pay a hundred thirty thousand dollars now for the animal control services. No capital on there. But with the capital project that they're going forward with.
Another ninety-eight thousand?
It's almost a hun, it's, it's almost another hundred thousand dollars a year.
For how long, forever?
No, fifteen years, the bond. So it's roughly one point five million.
One point five million?
Right. But we had no say in it, I mean, they just.
Just off of police department bid, because we're, you know, thinking about our bottom line for our capital investments, but we're funding theirs.
I don't even remember if they told us originally when they decided to do that capital project.
No.
I think they told us that they were doing it.
I mean, I think it'd be fair to increase our yearly rate, you know, twenty or thirty thousand and say that's, we'll go with that, but, you know, that, I know that's what I'm having a problem with, that, that amount, that whole extra. Not that we, not that we don't like their service, we're not, nobody's saying that, that's just that, the amount. So I think maybe they could be flexible and we can kind of keep it the same for a little bit more money.
So can you just talk to Vin tomorrow when he's in?
Okay. Next we have review and discussion on draft twenty twenty-one proposal resolution adopting an ordinance regarding cannabis.
Yeah, this is actually just more informational purposes as well, when Vin was here to talk you through the process. I think originally we talked about a new section or new place to talk about cannabis and then started looking at the alcohol and, and the language around that. So I think this is his, his first brush at, at looking at combining, and get, in this sense, amending section eighty, what is it, eighty, eighty-eight dash thirteen H. That deals with alcohol to include cannabis in there, so.
So the same rules will apply with alcohol or cannabis, right?
Well, yeah, he, well, he's, he's, he's kind of outlined it here that cannabis, cannabis products, cannabis-type substances, as these terms are defined. And then talking about in bullet one, where he would fit that, fit that in in terms of the bringing alcoholic beverages, comma cannabis, cannabis products and so forth. That that's where he, he would modify or amend this particular ordinance for alcohol to include cannabis. And it's just always a concept idea, if the council wants to go with that, then we can come back at the next meeting and in the proper format and the proper procedure to go forward. If that's the way you want to handle it as an amendment versus a whole new ordinance, if you will.
So that would just insert cannabis where alcohol is referenced?
Well, the way he's, I mean, we're not kicking out.
Vin, I would be, same here, we've had discussions about this in the firm about how we're dealing with these issues. And one of the things that we've been talking about is that since some, a lot of the issues are the same with alcohol use, is it possible to amend municipal ordinances to not just insert cannabis, but look at the alcohol order, see how, what provisions are appropriate to cover cannabis in addition to alcohol under the existing ordinance as opposed to drafting an entire new ordinance that just deals with cannabis? So that, that's the concept that he's talking about is, and, and I think what Mike is asking is does the, if the town council thinks that that's potentially appropriate way to deal with this issue, then he would come back with a recommendation about this is what I think we should do to modify your alcohol ordinance to cover cannabis. These are the issues that are created as a result of that and this is how we think it should be dealt with.
Chief, how does, how does this affect the police department? Have you guys discussed this?
We're exempt, the, the officers can't use marijuana, is that what you're asking?
That's a shame. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I mean, when you pull over speeders or something like that.
Well, we can't be, for speeders, we have to have another violation, we can't just pull over a person for the suspicion of marijuana.
Can you, can you detect marijuana use if?
I can't hear you.
Can you detect marijuana use?
So that's part of the training that Marie was talking about, we're going to have to send officers to drug recognition schools. Very costly, time-consuming, so we're going to probably need a couple officers to do that.
Okay. So chief, if you see somebody driving in a car smoking marijuana, you can't pull them over?
Not just for the marijuana violation.
Not even if you smell it?
Yeah.
Huh.
Unlike, unlike alcohol, if I see you drinking a can of beer or whatever, I can pull you over.
If someone has a legally described other drug that can impair, can that be associated with alcohol or?
If, if the person's impaired, that's where the, the importance of getting people trained in drug recognition, it's called a DRE, drug recognition expert. So to be able to determine what type of drug that person is on, whether it be marijuana, Xanax, whatever, whatever it might be. So if you're under the influence of, of a drug that impairs your driving, that's, that's where it's important that we get that trained. And part of that training requires new officers right now to go to Arizona to do the training. Another one of the unfunded Band-Aids that has been put on police partners.
My personal feeling is I think we should start at this level here, just amending section eighty-eight thirteen to add cannabis into the section with alcoholic beverages and everything else, rather than go through a whole new ordinance, specifically just for cannabis.
I agree, would it be a public hearing that we're doing this or just?
I, I don't know, how do you feel about, for amending that, I believe you do have to have a public hearing for amendment. But rather than just write one solely for cannabis, I would just insert it into what we exist, have currently.
But can people, in the past, were they able to smoke cigarettes when they're at the Poco Fest?
They, well, no, you're not supposed to.
You're not supposed to.
Correct, because you can't, you're not supposed to smoke on town, on town property. But, but, no, I mean, it's, it's really hard to enforce.
I was, I was going to say, it must be very hard to enforce.
Yeah.
But that, that, because that definitely would be in here now, drawing cigarettes.
Right. It's the same thing on, on, I, I believe on, you know, town-owned property, schools, the town hall, you know, all of parks, there, it's all the town-owned properties. It's, it's just smoke, just regular smoking is very hard to enforce.
Okay, so we need a public hearing then?
Well.
We want to get the draft back, we want to look at it.
Yeah.
Decide if we want to go to public hearing with them.
Right. So, so is the consensus that we want to just go with this amendment?
That's the logical approach in my mind.
Yeah, so that's, that's the way to come back to us and then we can proceed however we need to do it.
Right, okay, will we back it, will we get back to the fifth?
So everywhere it says alcohol, it'll say cannabis. All right, next, we have a request from superintendent for the return of the special education excess cost grant money to be used for the next academic year table until September. Okay, Scott?
Thank you. So the last time that I was here, Suzanne Wright was also with me, who was my special ed director, she has since retired. So I'd like to introduce Sarah Alberti, who is our new special ed director. Martha Vaughn, who you've met before, is our business manager as well. So at our last meeting when we met, there were three questions that you had posed to us that we wanted to come back to you with. There was also a little historical data of years past regarding the excess cost and I asked Anthony to forward it to me and he shared it specifically with you, dating back to two thousand fifteen and then as recent as this past year. And Anthony, did the council receive that correspondence as well?
They might have got a previous item on the topic, you want them to go through.
Okay. So, looking back to approximately two thousand fifteen, Sarah Clairefield was on the board at that time and she made a request. Al Rose was sitting on the council and the money was returned back to the board that had passed through. And then there were a number of years that, that was not. Anthony is passing out the sheets now and the amount that was received.
This goes back to the fifteen time period that Scott's talking about?
Totally eight hundred and five thousand four hundred and eighty dollars, that's the bottom number that you look at from two thousand fifteen to two thousand, excuse me, twenty. So the first question was regarding the budgeting of the seven students. If you, do you recall what Suzanne Wright explained to you about excess cost and the formula and, and what we pay and what is returned to us? Do you want Sarah to revisit that? I, I'm asking the council, I know it's late and we've, we've done this before, but if you want to.
Yeah, I think.
You kind of need to hear.
Seven specific students that, so Sarah, do you want to just explain to them the excess cost locals?
Sure, it's nice to meet all of you. So I went through North Grandford schools through eighth grade, so I, I'm, I'm happy to be back. So in terms of excess cost, it's exactly what it, what it says. So it's money in excess of what we would typically spend for a student. So a general education student, on average, the per pupil expenditure is about eighteen thousand dollars. The state has determined through their calculations that a special education student costs about four and a half times that. And so they then take an amount, multiplying that, so if you think about, we're eighteen thousand two hundred and thirty-four as a, as a per pupil expenditure for a general education student. You take a special education student and your per pupil expenditure rises to eighty-two thousand fifty-four dollars. And that's on average, some of them are below that, but some of them do go above, and that's where this conversation comes into play. And so for students where we're spending in excess of that four and a half times, so we're spending in excess of that eighty-two thousand dollars, we will get a partial reimbursement. That reimbursement automatically goes to the town, but it's for monies that we've already expended on those individual students. While we do our best to budget for the students and what their special education needs are going to be, year to year it can change and there's a lot of unexpected things that, that arise. We get students that move into the district who are already, or potentially outplaced. We have some students and, and I think it's wonderful, we get students in that we're able to maintain the district, but they require a one-to-one nurse. So their needs rise to the level of exceeding what that amount would be. And so what we're looking at is really narrowed down to the seven students that exceed that eighty-two thousand dollars and the partial reimbursement that is allotted for that amount. And because the funds are already expended, it's monies that we've already paid out. In, in, typically that money comes back into the board to continue to provide supports and services for, for students. Are there any questions on that information before I turn it back over?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So getting back to just that explanation, the second question was the council informed us that the excess cost funds for two thousand nineteen, twenty, where is it reflected in our revenue? So Ms. Vaughn is here to, I think, for the nineteen, twenty school year of, of our expenditures.
For the twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one first.
Twenty twenty-one school year.
Special ed budgeted spent and then the sixty-seven thousand?
We, we specifically budgeted for special education for the twenty twenty-one school year roughly six point two million dollars. And for expenditures, we spent six point nine million dollars on special education. A little over five hundred thousand dollars of that is specifically for benefits for staff that work for special ed. So even if you take that off, you're still at six point four million for total expenditures for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year. The revenue that superintendent spoke of for the nineteen, twenty fiscal year was given to us after the year had ended and I believe it's in Fund twenty-five currently. So that is the fund that the board established to maintain the carryover that you allowed us to, to bring into the next fiscal year.
Any questions specifically that you have that we didn't answer or information that you?
I guess, I'm, I think I asked this last time, but can you just clarify again, what is the downstream impact of us not providing this? What is the benefit if we do?
The benefit in a zero-budget year where we're working at a flat line, if we were to not get back, what is the amount that would be withheld from us?
The partial reimbursement changes year to year, so what I, the, the numbers that I have is based off of the twenty twenty-one school year. Those seven students exceeded what would be typically expended by two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And we budgeted to try to make up for that, right? You anticipate what the next year is going to be based off of the prior year, but we were still off by a hundred and three thousand dollars. So those funds that were expended came from somewhere else within the budget. And so we put on a Band-Aid, you know, you plug the leak because you need to, you need to account for these other students. But where you pulled from needs to be replenished because it means supports and services for other students. It can be things like hair professional, curriculum supports.
Services directly to students.
What is it that we pulled from, I just want to make sure so we can.
So you're getting a, you're getting a balance sheet now of a hundred seventy thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars.
That's we received for twenty twenty-one.
That's what's commended, so that's significant when you look at support services. When you look at if it was a special ed teacher with benefits, that's, that could be eighty-five thousand depending upon where they come in, if they do family benefits or, so it, it's an impact.
So not getting, not getting those additional funds means we had to pull from other places within our budget to make up for the deficit in special ed.
Do you have examples of things that were compromised that you had to pull from?
I don't think it's an even trade, I think what ends up happening is as, as we, I mean, it's a, it's a fluid document, right? So our, the budget that we work with, the budget that any district works with in the area of special education, you don't know who's walking in the door tomorrow. And we can end up with a student who's an outplace and over, over a hundred thousand dollars and that's just, you just deal with it. But I think in terms of where that fund, where those monies are coming from, it's wherever we can take it with the least impact in the immediate future. It's not a, well, we're going to pull from instructional supplies or we're going to pull from, you know, the, our given talent or our social work services. Like it's, it's really piecemealing it just to get to that next step. And that's kind of how the special ed budget has always worked. And, and that's typically why that excess cost becomes so important, is because those funds, it's a cycle and we rely on that cycle to continue. So when there's a breakdown or those funds aren't replenished, and it's only a partial amount, we're not getting all of it back any base, the state only gives you a certain percentage. But it's not, it's not an easy way to, well, I pulled it from here, so I have to put it back, it ends up being a little bit more spread out.
Good example, and, and what Sarah is, is talking about, I think two weeks ago we notified of a student that was going to be returned to instruction in an elementary school that requires a full-time nurse that is wheelchair-bound. That's something that we did not budget for, that we did not know, we received this phone call, this student will be starting with us in two weeks. And, and this is the type of thing that can arise and, and we have to react and respond.
So why did we receive a hundred and seventy thousand dollars?
I think the question is why didn't it come back to the board of?
No, 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 I want to.
It washes that.
That, that's, that's, that's the, that's what the state, you know.
Gives back to you, to the town.
Based on what?
The four and a half times.
Basically, four minutes for the special ed students over that eighty-two thousand threshold.
So that's a calculation from the state.
Right, that's, that's what I was looking for.
So we spend that money, then we get a fractional piece back that comes back to the town that in the past has been given back to the Board of Education for these costs that, you know, arise that we don't plan for.
So at the last meeting when you were here and presented, the town attorney did not agree with what you had sent us from Cabe and it ended that the board's attorney and the town attorney were going to have a conversation and did that take place?
So I had the Cabe response that I read to you and before I went and spent more money on our lawyer to speak with, attorney and do that, I was hoping we would be able to, you know, historically in all towns and Sarah, you work in a couple districts, it's not even a question, that money comes right back through to us and it has in the past. I don't know why it stopped, to be honest with you, and I guess maybe. And I guess maybe we were asleep at the wheel and we weren't aware of it, but when Sarah Perfield started that process and then it went away, that money then was put back to the town and went somewhere. It did not go to special education, which the statute clearly states. And what Cabe explained to us, the Association of Boards of Ed, that that money is earmarked to pass back through to be used for them.
Well, I remember when Sarah explained that to the council and so for a year or two, special ed was not funded at a hundred percent and then the money went directly to the Board of Ed. But then we went back to funding the Board of Education at a hundred. Your, the budgets that came to us were, special ed was funded at a hundred percent, whatever was in your budget. I mean, it was a budget that was derived from the Board of Education. They put it together and it was funded at a hundred percent, not at a reduced. And, and so on the, on the years that it was reduced, you automatically got the special ed excess cost grant, but.
Well, from fifteen to twenty, you see eight hundred and something thousand dollars.
Right.
Right. So I'm just saying what the document that you have is what we're working on that Anthony gave to us. So we're speculating for next year. Obviously, we don't have a crystal ball. We just have a new student come in. So the impact is significant for us to have to go into our budget and find, that's, that's, you know, for us, one percent is three hundred thousand dollars in a thirty-one million dollar budget. So that's significant.
The board budget is put together on known students at the time.
Right, right. We understand that. And sometimes, sometimes they had, you had anticipated. In the budget, it was anticipated, so there might have been one or two extra or whatever.
This statute is developed to account for those things that are surprises. So it would be, you know, those students that are over the four and a half times the regular.
So I tried to find in your board minutes when you did your line item transfers for the end of the year as to how much money went into special ed to cover the costs that you were short and I couldn't find anything in your minutes. There's a, there's a motion, but there's no numbers, there's no accounts showing you took from one account to put into special.
The board is actually reviewing those transfers and will vote on them next year.
No, no. Last year. In last year's, I went and looked in the board minutes and there's, there's the motion that says it's approved.
For just the amount, probably.
But there's no, there's no line item transfers specific saying you took from supplies and you went into special ed or you took from this account and went to special ed to show that you funded the extra money on there. So if.
It had to come from somewhere. I'm saying to you, from two thousand fifteen to twenty, there's eight hundred and five thousand dollars that the town did something with. That each year there was the amount based upon the formula by the state that was supposed to wash them to us. Okay, we can, you know.
Well, that, that's where the difference of opinion came with our attorney is what he explained to us. So that's where we're coming, so that's where we were coming from is he explained it differently and, and that's what we were waiting for to come back as to what that came.
And Cabe's response to the statute and the expectation and what we're sharing is, is, you know, it's consistent. It happened here in the past and it stopped for whatever reason and the sixty-seven thousand dollars is in Fund twenty-five from the past year. And we're saying, we're asking that it's consistent with what every other town is doing after the Board of Ed expends that money and then on a formula for those children, it comes back to our children in our programs with special needs. And some of these things we don't forecast, like this young child that's joining us with a private nurse in two weeks. That, that's what we're, we're asking for. I don't have the line item transfers. That was not asked of me for tonight. I don't have that. So again, we've been here three times. I think that we've given you all the information. We've answered all the questions and we're asking you without having to have our attorney contract to meet with the town attorney to spend more money on something that I think is pretty straightforward.
Scott, so you budget eighty-two thousand times seven? Is that what you said? Is that what you're? I'm just trying to get a grip on that.
So it's a formula. So, no, so it's any child that could be outplaced or goes over that threshold of eighty-two thousand dollars.
No, no, no. What I mean is your budget at the beginning of the year, you have seven, if you have seven students, is this, and you said it's four times or four point two times?
Four and a half times.
Four and a half times.
So the way, the way the budget is developed specifically for special education students is you, you look at the previous year and you make estimates about the number of students based off of enrollment and those sorts of things. The excess cost comes into play. We have to do a quarterly reporting on all of that. What are the expenditures? Who's the student? It includes transportation-related services if we have to do additional contracting. And then they take those students that meet that threshold, which is the four and a half times, and those are the students that get flagged. So it really funnels down to a very small group of students.
Right, but my question is.
What is the average cost for a special ed student?
What, are you, are you budgeting, like this year, for this year that we're in now, just started, is there a budget for special education?
For the real students from last year that moved forward to this year, yes, but I didn't budget for the student that I'm talking about that just joined us two weeks ago.
But the students you have, does that, does that mean there, there is a budget for eighty-two thousand dollars for each one of the ones you know, you identified during, during budget?
I'm not sure whether they.
Well, it might not be.
Some of these placements are a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Yes, but, but the average you said is, the cost, the cost of a student, a student is like sixteen or thirteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand.
Right. And you said four times that or four and a half times that. It comes out to eighty-two thousand was the number I heard.
Right.
Did you, but what I'm asking is the, the people that were transitioning from last year to this year, did you budget eighty-two thousand for each one of them?
Do you budget, do you budget based off of what the previous year was?
Well, they, they might budget a hundred twenty thousand because that's what it's costing for that.
But that's what he's asking. That's what he's asking.
So it's.
The real student in a placement moving forward a year, if they're in that same placement, we use the real number, probably a hundred twenty thousand and then move that number forward.
Right. So then, so then this, this, this money here, this hundred seventy or whatever the dollar value is, that's, that's in addition too because you overspent?
No, it's because it's a fractional piece that comes back.
Right.
To us.
But, but I'm, I'm assuming you overspent.
Yeah, well.
Right? Is that, that's what, that's what you're describing to us?
Yep. The special education in terms of you take what that excess cost was and what we budgeted for, we were over budget a hundred and three thousand dollars. And in terms of what that accounts for, we accounted for, and, and I, when I say we, I'm stepping into this role. I've been here since the end of July. But what we account for is we look at things like transportation increases. We try to look for contract increases of what may change from year to year. And also tuition rates, right? Tuition rates, some schools will stay the same for two or three years and some schools will stay the same for two years and then jump up. So we do our best, but we do have unexpected students that either come up, I mean, this is, we have some, without giving, you know, personal information, some of these students are just entering school and we're lucky enough to be able to keep them in district. So maybe we're not spending two hundred thousand on a health placement, but we're spending money on nursing and special transportation and those sorts of things. I think that the benefit is we're looking at seven students. I know there's a lot of districts even of similar size that are talking about more students because they're outplacing more. North Branford, from my experience so far, is keeping these students in. And I think being able to continue that cycle and certainly understanding that, you know, these funds that are coming back and, and not being golden and we're not able to necessarily prove where they're coming from and where it's going, being able to put that money back into the students and being able to provide them with the supports and services that they need so we can continue to keep the cycle going because without having those additional funds, it becomes more and more difficult to provide appropriately and proactively. Once we start working reactively on this, we're gonna start losing students out of district. And I'm proud to be here because there's seven students that are outplaced. That's it. And that's unheard of. And looking at different towns across the state, those numbers are in the double. The district I came from, it was over forty students. So excess cost, we got it. I'd rather decrease the number of outplaced students and, and have less money coming back than, than the alternative. So being new to the conversation, I don't have the historical perspective, but I, I always go back to what's in the best interest of students and being able to keep the cycle going and, and being consistent with that, I think answers that question.
I appreciate every, all the information that they clarified for us and I think that everybody here has asked really good questions. So I mean, my position is that I think we should provide it.
So if you overspent last year or it happened that way and you have sixty-some thousand dollars still in the fund from the year before, why wasn't that money used?
I wasn't here. I don't have that information.
It's not an over expenditure in that we overspent our entire Board of Ed budget. It's an.
No, in special ed. I mean, it was, it was.
That we've exceeded the average cost of tuition.
Right, but so, so you, you, you had, we, we gave the excess cost grant money back to the district, but you still, a whole year has passed and you still have the money in the fund. So why wasn't that put back? I mean, I guess that's part of the issue is that you got the money back, but it's still sitting in the fund.
We were holding on to the money because this year we got a zero percent and we needed to make this year's.
Everyone else moved forward with wage increases and benefits. So with the zero increase, obviously, that's the challenge. And then we had to make difficult decisions. With special education with an IEP, we don't have a choice. And, and we don't have a crystal ball when students move into our district or come to our district that have exceptional needs.
Scott, were you, did you quantify for us? And I don't recall. You may have said this tonight. A new student we just got, what the cost is going to be, the excess cost for that student?
We don't have the total amount just yet.
So I, I don't wanna go into too many details, obviously, but I, I know it's, it's very involved. It will require hiring of additional staff aside from a, it's an RN, it's a registered nurse that will be with the child. And I'm assuming the, the transportation will.
Specialized transportation.
Will be, that can be upwards of thirty thousand dollars for one student, you know.
Plus you need a registered nurse dedicated to that child.
That one student with that student all day long for, for what has to happen throughout the day for this youngster. Yes.
So Scott, if twenty students like that were to show up next year, we'd have to have twenty registered nurses for those twenty students?
If they're, if it's in their IEP, a legal binding document that that's what they need, yes, we would.
And that would be determined by the team. So the, the team would look at the information coming in with the student to make a determination as to is this required for the student to access their education? And for this student, and in my experience, this number's not, this, this number doesn't get high. It's usually a rare situation. However, that's, that's what we have to deal with. Is day to day, your numbers change. I can get a student that moves in or is in foster care as part of DCF and if they become a nexus, meaning that they're now the responsibility of North Branford, I pick that up and I pick it up on day one. And then we have to figure out how are we gonna move to day two with this new expense that's coming in. Now, there's ebbs and flows, so students may go out, students may come in, but very rarely in my experience does the tide turn where now you have, oh, well, I'm under budgeted. Because special ed is never under budgeted as much as I try and maybe by the end of my career here, I'll come in under budgeted. But it's, it's an unexpected field and I think that as time goes on and, and, you know, the medical field is progressing, students are being able to be more successful, students are living with conditions that they might not be living with previously. And it's our job as a district to do everything we can to support them while they're here. And if they're not able to be successful in access, then we have to find what the most appropriate setting would be. But we always start, we always start in district because they're members of the community and that's really important.
I'll make the motion to award the money to the school district. I don't know the exact amount.
It's on the paper.
Is this, is the one seventy? Okay. One hundred seventy thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Second.
Is the excess cost.
Motion made by Councilor Diamond, second by Councilor Downs.
I just wanna be clear because down here.
Go ahead.
I can't hear perfectly clearly. You moved to fund a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to the Board of Ed? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
It is the, it may be very specific because it says a hundred and seventy, four hundred and sixty-one dollars. Is that, is that the number we're talking about?
Yes, it's the special ed excess cost grant.
Probably should do a roll call though.
Yeah. Yeah, I was just gonna ask for that. You want the roll call? Vote please.
Sure. Mayor Viglio?
No.
Deputy, Deputy Mayor Zampa?
Yes.
Councilmember Diamond?
Yes.
Councilmember Downs?
Yes.
Councilmember Founen?
You're looking at me like you're saying Thomas.
Sorry. Councilmember Founen?
Founen.
Yes.
Founen.
Yes.
Councilmember Gold?
Yes.
Councilmember Angeloni?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. It's nice to meet all of you.
Next we have approval of job description for Public Works Superintendent.
Yes. Yeah, that's the, we moved F up.
Yeah, that went to Vin for his review and there are three changes highlighted in blue, a few, his minor tweaks that he had made additions to.
Okay. All right. Next is new business discussion.
Well, no, we have, we have to approve it.
Oh, okay.
And Franny, you're okay with the changes that were made?
Yes.
You saw it on there?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve the job description for the Public Works Superintendent as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Councilor Angeloni, second by Councilor Founen. Any further discussion? Can I have a vote, please?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, before we go on, I just wanna make motions to amend the agenda to add. So I'd like to add item thirteen H, which is additional funding to QA and M for the NBIS project. And item I, additional funding to Silver Petrazuli, project number sixteen point two ninety for the North Branford Police Department.
I'll second that.
Did you just specify the amount of sixty-seven hundred?
Well, I was just adding the item to the agenda.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So when we get to it, we will.
Okay. Motion by Councilor Angeloni, second by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion? A vote please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we'll move to H. Rose, you wanna do that again? You wanna?
No, we're, we're on thirteen, so we have to start at the top there. We didn't do anything in there.
I thought this was twelve H and I.
No, it's thirteen.
No, we were doing twelve.
We just finished twelve and now this, I added thirteen H.
Oh, on thirteen. Okay, okay. I got under twelve. Okay. All right. So we have new business discussion in action. Review temporary access permit for town property of one thousand and five Middletown Avenue.
Yeah, so I, I think Victor might have some extra or updated plan, but essentially that, that the Eversource LMP has come to us looking for an easement to upgrade the structures that they have in, in the area and looking for an easement across the property that the town owns. So this is their temporary access permit that Vin has, has reviewed and approved. So this is their temporary access permit that Ben has reviewed and approved for their access. We'll get some site improvements out of the deal, not, I mean, in terms of helping them get better access to the structures. And maybe even some holes if Fran decides that's what they could use or reuse, so. Well, in my opinion, again, I think you want to probably hear from Fran or from Victor, but it doesn't appear that it's going to have much impact for our, won't have any impact for our operations, what we do up there. So I think it's just not very straightforward, but minimal impact. And hopefully benefit when they leave and they're done with the project. What exactly are we looking at?
Yeah, okay, so the, this property known as one thousand and five Middletown Avenue, Fran can correct me, I think it's also referred to historically as a syncway property. So the access strip to the property is off of Middletown Avenue, and you can see that paved portion of the access strip to one thousand and five. It's not, one thousand and five isn't labeled on this plan, but you can see the black dashed line that's going along that paved access strip. That would be the CLMP designation of them using that paved access strip to gain access to the property. The dashed line then turns into a white, and, I'm gonna get my glasses out.
Is that red square on Bezuto's property there?
No. No.
Oh, yeah, it is.
Right, it's on Bezuto's, right?
Okay.
It's right across from Bezuto's property.
So then the dashed line turns into a white and black dashed line, and it's outlined in red at that point. So that's CLMP gaining access through the undeveloped portion of the syncway property. And then the dashed line turns into a yellow dashed line. That's their designation of the area on the syncway property where they're proposing to make some improvements and add some gravel to a... It basically is a car path right now. Needs to be cleared of some light vegetation, some gravel added to it, so their heavy machinery can run over that car path. And the wetlands that you see designated on the syncway property, none of those wetlands are gonna be disturbed outside of the CLMP easement. So the CLMP easement is that dark black line that crosses through the property and it extends through other properties towards Middletown Avenue. So once they gain access to their easement area, they're permitted by their sighting council approvals to do the work that they're doing at the red numbered box locations are where they're doing the work. Eight, I'm sorry, eighty-eight forty-three, eighty-eight forty-four, and eighty-eight forty-five. Those are all within their easement area, so that's not really the portion of this proposal that is considered the temporary access. The temporary access is the black dashed line, the red and white dashed line, and a portion of that yellow dashed line before they enter into their easement areas.
So all of this is theirs?
And Victor, what do they mean by temporary? How long are they gonna use it?
So, right, the temporary access will terminate twelve months after the agreement, and I don't believe they need twelve months to do the work that they're doing, but it's just the timeline.
So a year or less?
Yeah, a year or less, correct. And the other, I guess, important points to the temporary access permit would be that the CLMP is gonna indemnify and hold harmless the owner of the town of North Branford against all claims, and they're gonna clean up the site to its, at least to similar to its existing condition. Fran's already talked to them about, you know, reworking some of the area there and making some changes. So at least overall, the overall concept is to get it back to, you know, a condition that we're satisfied with. And the final point there is that CLMP will provide a certificate of insurance naming the town of North Branford as an additional insured. So those were the points that I believe, or this language was already reviewed by the town attorney. I don't believe, and Mike can kind of maybe weigh in there for me just to verify that, we have a thumbs up from the town attorney?
Yeah, and I think you pretty gave it on as well, so it's a vote from Ben.
Sorry, well, not to the majority, you're not here, but we meant Ben.
So does anybody have a problem with it?
As long as the town attorney has seen it and approved it and weighed in on it.
Well, if Vinnie's good with language, that's fine. And if he's good with technical details, I don't really think we should get hung up over it.
Can we go with it, Franny?
Yeah, this don't impact us at all. I mean, it's just sort of site boards.
So do we need to make a motion?
Yeah, simple motion to instruct me to execute the agreement, or that you approve the agreement.
Okay, so I make a motion authorizing the town manager, Michael Paulus, to approve the access permit over the town property at one thousand and five Middletown Avenue.
Second that.
Motion by Councilor Angeloni, second by Councilor Gold. Any discussion? Do we have a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is North Branford High School road issue.
Doesn't seem to be an issue anymore, is it?
Yeah, I think that was resolved and head back to the permanent project.
We talked about that, okay. All right, C is North Branford Police Department, CM versus GC RFQ slash P.
Yeah, that was the second item that came out of their previous meeting and just to, you know, to inform the council that I think what they're wrestling with, and I don't know if there was a final vote, but looking, when this gets repackaged, that they would like to consider, or at least have the council consider, when we put it back out on the street as potentially construction manager at risk, like we're doing with the high school versus the original, first time they bid it, they bid it as a general contractor, GC. So they're contemplating that, and I think they'll probably have a decision Thursday at their meeting. So just so you weren't surprised by it, they are weighing that option, and there's a sort of back and forth debate about whether or not that is gonna be truly beneficial to the project or if in fact maybe it is too small for a, you know, construction manager at risk. So obviously, there are different scales when you look at the high school versus the PD. So I'd rather be coming back with a full recommendation of both from them.
So there's nothing for us to act on?
It's premature for us to act.
At this point, yes, more informational.
Okay.
Okay. All right, next, appropriation transfers?
Yeah, two very small ones arose from the credit card that were transactions as of June 30, but they hit on July 1st, but the actual transaction date was June, so that's why they come into last year's budget.
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, financial report as of August 31st, 2021.
It's unremarkable. The numbers are really brand new. They're insignificant to, the tax numbers are ahead of last year, which is one of the key things I look at, revenue is ahead of last year. Expenditure, nobody's over expended, obviously, yet, early in the year. Nothing to report on the appropriation transfers. On the rest of that package, you'll see, as Councilor Angeloni had mentioned earlier, I did include the document that I gave finance, which gave you the update on the high school, showing we had spent about four point two point four point two eight nine million as of 9/10. And the police station, we had spent about two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, again, as of 9/10. The last page in my report are the three pots that we've given the Board of Ed previously, allowed them to carry one percent over from seventeen eighteen. Three oh one, that's the exact amount that was carried over from seventeen eighteen. Two percent fund from nineteen twenty, started out around six hundred and forty or fifty, I believe. There's still five hundred and forty-three thousand there at their disposal. And the special ed excess, the eighty-five thousand we gave them from nineteen twenty, that pot still remains at eighty-five thousand as well.
Okay. All right, tax refund?
Some, second. I saw this one quick.
You gotta be faster, Marie. Okay, who?
Marie made it. I second.
Marie made the motion? All right, motion by Councilor Diamond, second by Councilor Angeloni. Any further discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Confirmation of planning and zoning administrator, town planner?
Well, do we want to, can we discuss that in executive session first?
Probably should.
And then vote on it when we come out of the executive session? Because we didn't have a time.
That would be my preference.
Yeah. So we'll just wait until we come up.
Yeah, I think it's the best way to do it. All right, next, Rose H, you want to do that?
Okay. Well, so my first question is to Anthony on the QA and M, it's ninety-seven thousand dollars, and we haven't appropriated any money yet. So where would this money come from?
There was a hundred thousand put aside towards the additional brickwork at NBIS, I believe in nineteen twenty or twenty twenty-one. We spent about fourteen out of that, so maybe like eighty-five plus or minus left in that pot. And I believe the balance, you could probably pull from that other NBIS water infiltration money that we had set aside on some Board of Ed projects.
It was like two hundred thousand, a hundred and eighty thousand something.
So between those two pots, we should be able to cover the ninety-one seven is the number, Fran, that page you're looking at?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, I just, we're, you know, with a motion to be more comfortable that you authorize the expenditure and that way everybody's on board with it.
Right. But we need to have a funding source on it, right?
Yeah, I would reference those two pots. The NBIS water infiltration money as well as the NBIS additional brickwork. Those are two capital projects you put forward in the last two or three years. So we'll use the oldest one first. I believe it's the NBIS water infiltration money. I believe that's money that's already been moved forward once or twice from other closed-out projects. We'll use that money first, and then whatever's left, we'll pull out of that NBIS additional brickwork money.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to authorize QA and M for additional work on the NBIS brick and roof project at a cost of ninety-one thousand, seven hundred dollars to be funded from the two pots of money for NBIS water infiltration and the NBIS additional brickwork.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilor Angeloni. Joe, was that you?
Yes.
Second. Any discussion? Can I have a vote, please?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Rose, you want to do the next?
I'd like to make a motion to approve sixty-seven hundred dollars to Silver Petrazuli for project number sixteen point two ninety for additional work for the North Branford Police Department. And this is funded out of the project money.
I just referenced for a total of sixteen seven pursuant to the quote dated September 15th. That way, it's all black and white.
Okay.
I'll second that. Okay. Motion by Councilor Angeloni, second by Councilor Gold. Any discussion? Can I have a vote, please?
With all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Okay. Next, we have citizen statements and petitions.
No comments on Facebook.
Wow.
No email.
Okay. All right, I need a motion.
I just have a question as to why the chief and deputy chief are still here. Was there something on the agenda that...
It's the executive session.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. That answers it, then. Just wondering, they've been sitting here so patiently and I haven't gotten...
Just take pride in what you're saying.
Okay. Good. I make a motion to go into executive session under CGS one dash two hundred six B, pending litigation, and also contract negotiations to include the town attorney, the chief of police, the deputy chief of police, and the town manager.
Yeah, I would recommend that we do the union negotiation first because, so they don't have to sit through...
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah. Does Anthony have to be in it?
Yeah.
Okay, and to include the town finance director, Anthony. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
That was quick.
Go right into it.
Okay, motion by Councilor Angeloni, second by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion? Any vote, please?
All in favor?